Um, so five o'clock, I'm calling the meeting to order. The agenda items to be discussed is the update and discussion for the next steps of the, uh, of the committee.
And I'll call a roll call.
Please.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Ms. Hurst, absent.
No, I'm, I'm present.
Oh, great. Hey Denise.
I'm so sorry you all. I'm so, so sorry.
No worries.
No problem at all. We can, we can make that up easy. So don't worry about it.
Okay. Thank you.
See you.
Nice to see you too.
And Ms. Naylor.
Present.
Perfect.
So in the update, I'm gonna start and then Lydia could continue help me out. Um, when we started the staff demographic committee, I, we had three phases to that we had agreed to complete. The first phase was to gather and analyze the data. The second phase was meeting with the stakeholders in the community eh, for the purpose, uh, com- um, um, gathering information and see what we're gonna be going next. And now we are in the phase three, implementing, implementing. Um, in, in that phase three, um, that's the purpose of the meeting today. Um, it has been created the DIR committee. Um, and in the DIR committee, which we are part of those, those committees, we have been discussing, um, the diversity. Um, from the chair perspective, I have heard some concerns when it comes to the equity, the part of the equity specifically by Latonia. So what I'm suggesting to, tonight is that we look at the gaps when it comes to equity and see how the committee, we gonna work from there. So, um, Ms. Naylor, I would like you to take the floor and just indicate what are the gaps that you have looked and you think is missing when it comes to the part of the equity portion.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Perez. So there's a few elements of it. Um, I think when you look at it from a, uh, staff or personnel perspective, um, we do have now recently, I wanna say now in the last year, right? That Mr. Grimes came on board to focus on recruitment and diversity and such. Uh, but what we're also seeing is that there is, um, I would like for us to really look at what exactly is his responsibility and his role? Because there are what they call equity officers in a lot of different municipal, um, whether it be city halls or school districts that are really looking at things from the HR perspective that we wouldn't necessarily pay attention to as school committee members because we don't dig in those weeds, but that's their job is to really look at and make sure that the policies around staff hiring, staff interviewing, staff, um, reviews and all of those kinds of things, training and all of that, that there's equity from that perspective. And so my understanding is that of his role, that's not what he would do. That his role is strictly recruitment and hiring, and maybe I'm wrong. So I think part of the, the question or the gap that I see is do we have somebody operating in that capacity? And if not, then we need to think about how do we make sure that there's a staff person on that level that's able to do that work? Uh, from a school committee perspective, hold on one second, sweetie, quiet. From a school committee perspective, um, then there is the fact that we have certain things that are considered to be inequitable, but may not necessarily on the face or surface appear to be racially connected or culturally connected. So for example, there's the issues around standardized testing, right? The issues around MCAS in general specifically, but in addition standardized testing and how it affects, um, districts that are majority, minority or majority, uh, people of color. Uh, and poor, people that are majority living in poverty. Then there are other things like, give me one second because I made a list. I wanna make sure I don't forget. All right, there's a curriculum, there's policies, of course, that we can look at as a school committee. But then there's also other things like early college access, dual enrollment opportunities. Um, and then feasibility or resource assessments to see what's available to students and looking at it from the perspective of each school being equitable. So we know that, for example, Putnam is a vocational school, so we can't expect to have all the classes that they teach at Putnam be available at a site tech or commerce. But there's still other ways that we can make sure there's equitable support of the students and not one school, because they're across the street from Mass Mutual, getting more service and support than another school that just happens to be in the boonies somewhere. And there's no business that's, that can adopt it or is opted to adopt that school. Uh, and so that's another way that we look at equity. So I said it in essence to say that a lot of the things that we focus on through our diversity lens or that we initially talked about in the very beginning is not the same as some of these other elements that do affect equity directly. So I would like to better understand how would we be able to attack some of those issues that are inequitable, that are affecting our, our folks? And oh, the one other thing I forgot is community engagement. How often or how connected folks are to the community and, um, having access to resources? So we know that, for example, Duggan, which happens to be in the empowerment zone, has like a hundred different organizations that go in on their building that they're able to have, provide free resources, dance, art, cooking, whatever you name it to the kids, but that's not happening in the next middle school. So looking at also the engagement of the community and the engagement of families and parents in the schools as well. And making sure that the culture is susceptible and welcoming so that families are, are willing to or feeling welcome and invited to, to be a part of the community. So those are like all of the tentacles of, of equity that I see that do, that do directly affect people of color. But oftentimes folks will say or not, if, if they're not studying this work, may not understand or see the connectivity between how does it directly impact our kids, our black and brown kids?
Oh. Point well taken, is what I could say at this point. So, um, Ms. Naylor, you know what? I will appreciate if you could email me, um, because that will be part of the phase three. Um, we need to, uh, due to COVID, the pandemic, COVID nineteen, I've, uh, everything like kinda stopped for a second. Um, I'm gonna, um, have the report from the, um, the stakeholders meeting, which it was great. We had about twenty-five people. Um, and we had great stakeholders at that, a meeting that we had before the COVID nineteen. And some of the gaps that you're presenting, they were briefly touched because we were, our recommendation was to then, that's how the DIR committee was created. And that's the phase three that we need to look at it. So I will appreciate if you put all those gaps in the content. And then I think at the la- at the next meeting, and if we could, um, have, um, what do you call it? Um, schedule the meeting. I think that we need to work in correlation where the finding is analyzing, um, the data. Because I hear a combination or a couple of things when it comes to the HR and to the role that Mr. Miles playing and all that. Um, and I apologize because it's raining where I am and the, um, the, the internet goes on and off. But, uh, what I gather, I think that there's points well taken there, then, then it will be charged to work on the phase three. And I don't know as a group, as the subcommittee, is that's the venue? And I'm looking for a recommendation that we should take with phase three at this point. Um, so thank you so much. Um, and then we were able to charge the different, um, persons, um, they are responsible for some of the, in, 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 and create probably, um, a statistics of, uh, questions and answer. So that's why I, I will appreciate if you send me that information by email and share with the other subcommittee members. So we could, we could go in then to the last part of phase three. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Ms. Perez. And there's one other thing that I didn't mention, and that was our, um, training. So I know that we talked about briefly in a school committee meeting about a month or so ago, that we need to have training, not just for our district leaders and, and principals and educators, but also for the school committee. That we are trained on anti-racism and, and equity and all of that stuff. Because then it's easier for us to be able to have the conversation and understand where DIR is coming from. If we are all trained and understand what it is that they're learning. Because there's a lot of folks that are not getting that same training that they're receiving, which is really good stuff. But if we're in charge and we're making these decisions and don't get the same information, it's gonna be difficult.
Right, of course. That's a good point. I, I, after that meeting, Chris talked to me about, um, trying to set something up. So I talked to, uh, folks to see, I know we're bringing Khaleesi Warnham in for the staff. So we're gonna try to set her to do something for school committee. So we're, we're working on that after that suggestion came up at the meeting because Chris approached me on it. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that going for you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any other comments from the other, uh, members?
May I ask a question? So this, so the purpose of the meeting was to discuss next steps for moving into phase three?
Correct.
And phase three incorporates what? What is three?
Well, uh, phase three is incorporate, we, originally, it was not the demographic committee, it was the diversity committee. Um, so, um, I think that that throws us out as changing it to the demographic committee. Because our honesty, it was the diversity committee, which out of there, we created what is the DIR committee. And I think through the DIR committee, we were looking, the next step was the equity committee. And we had not gone to the station. That's what I need the help of everybody as the, the, the subcommittee. What is it that we gonna identify? And that's a good question. Um, I know Ms. Naylor had identified a couple of things that we need to identify. So now we are in that part. Um, I have to understand more, and I don't know, Lydia who emphasized in the DIR committee, at one point, um, it was discussed the equity in creating this committee. That's how the committee was formed. But we have not said, like we said in phase one, um, what was, uh, what was it that the subcommittee was gonna be doing in terms? We put it on phase one, phase two, and then we had the last part. And I think that's what the part that now we need to implement and what is it? And that should be the question that we gonna focus, um, on as a working, um, subcommittee group. And I don't know if that answered your question, but that's where we are right now. And that's why I'm recommending to anyone, not only Ms. Naylor, uh, we could come together as a subcommittee and put some, um, um, s- some graphic together like we did with phase one, that we created the data. And we gotta go do some research like we did with the, with the, with the day, with the day, um, when it come to gathering the data of the employees when it comes to the school department. I think this part, phase three, we are being charged to do the same thing as phase one, that it was gathering the, the data for their employees. So that's where we are, Denise, right now. And it's, it's very important that the subcommittee, I, we get, we work all together getting those input. What is it that we, because we need to prioritize, once we gather the data as a working group, as a subcommittee, we need to then prioritize where we gonna start, what's the most important thing at this point that we need to start, um, researching? And I think the other ones will fall, follow along with it. Um, but we have not identified. So I would like, um, Lydia to tell us what is the vision and mission of the DIR committee at this point as having some, some subcommittees?
So, um, we do have the, um, um, exact wording, I can pull it up. Um, find it in my emails, but, um, so basically the DIR committee, just for everybody watching, is for the diversity, inclusion and racial equity, um, committee. And so it was formed to kinda take a look at four different tentacles of Springfield Public Schools. So, um, as you ladies know, because you're part of the subgroups, um, we've been looking at PD, we've been looking at the curriculum, we've been looking at, um, the policies and, um, procedures um, that we use within, um, the school. And then we've also been looking at diversifying, um, our staff and ensuring that we have folks, not only that look like us, but that everybody understands who we are, not just what we look like, but who we are, um, in terms of people, in terms of culture, in terms of just all the different backgrounds, right? L, L, LGBTQ, um, to just make sure that we are really incorporating being, um, inclusive of everybody within all the aspects of the Springfield Public Schools. And so the four committees were kind of, um, born so that we would have people really focusing in on those particular different, um, points. And so to bring them all together to, to, um, put together the exact diversity within the entire Springfield Public Schools. And so what the committees have been doing right now is really just taking a look, having conversations, for example, the curriculum, um, committee, which I believe, Latonia, is that the one you sit on? So the curriculum committee has really been looking at, what do our books look like? Are our books inclusive? Are, is our curriculum inclusive? What's missing in our curriculum? Um, we actually had a study done by the John Hopkins that really looked at our curriculum. We looked at that report, um, to show us what we were missing within our curriculum. And so one of the things that were identified was that we didn't do a good job. We're bringing in some of our minority groups. And we also didn't do a really good job at, um, LGBTQ, right? That there wasn't a lot of inclusivity within our curriculum around those demographics. And so the, um, curriculum subcommittee is really taking a look at that. The PD committee is doing kinda a two-fold job. The PD committee is really looking at who we're bringing in to not just train, um, our teachers, but to train everybody within the district and to identify some of the gaps that are missing. So we didn't want a one, one size fits all, right? Different people are at different phases. Some people do understand racial equity. Some people don't understand what white privilege is. Some people don't understand what implicit bias is. And so to really put together PD around all the different aspects of diversity so that everybody can get all the different aspects and that we weren't just doing a cookie cutter and saying, okay, everybody, today we're gonna learn implicit bias, because some of us already know it and know it well. Um, and so we were kinda looking at that through the PD and then looking at who's out there and who can bring in those pieces um, to meet the needs of the Springfield Public Schools. Um, the, um, the policy and, um, the policy and procedures, subcommittee was really looking at, um, to your point, um, that you brought up, Latonia, when you were talking about the equity warriors or officers, they're called, different things is, what could these things look at, at the schools? We know that the empowerment zone has already done some work with the healing racism folks around bringing in those groups, but we really wanted to do some really, a really deep dive to take a look at who are they, um, where do we begin with them, right? What training do they need? Because it's one thing naming them, but it's another thing for everybody to be trained to understand how to do that work. And so for example, one of the examples that came up at the last subcommittee that we had was around finding an inequity, but how do you approach it, right? You can't just go to the principal and you gotta know how to have that conversation. And then the principal needs to know how to understand how to receive that conversation. And everybody then needs to know how to understand, how to engage in that discussion to come up with the solution and so that it, it doesn't become an argument because there's a difference between debating and arguing. And so we needed people to even know that, um, so that you're making your point and that people are listening. So we wanted to make sure that we really took a look at these, um, equity warriors or equity teams and identify the who, the what, the when, and, and even the why. Um, and then the fourth one that I'm missing is really looking at the demographics, right? So, um, the hiring practices, like even looking at the language that we use on our postings. And we had a training from Desi about two years ago before COVID, when they were talking about the, that language matters. What you put in your postings really matters because some of the words are, actually work against folks. People feel, I can't do that. So you have to use words where people feel that they can achieve and be successful, that you can't have words that, that exclude people because they feel, oh, I've never had that training, I can't do that. That's not true because some of the training is when you get in the seat and then that training comes with actually doing. And so those, that's where we are with the committee itself. The committees are actually putting together, um, different aspects because we wanted to bring a PowerPoint, you know, per conversation with Maria, per the conversation of the diversity, so that everybody knows what the other subcommittee is doing to make sure that we bring it all together as, as one, um, a- as one approach to doing this work in the Springfield Public Schools and that we weren't all divided all over the place. So that's basically where we are right now, really having deep conversations. And then there's a steering committee, um, that where all this work kinda goes into and we start to identify what are the next steps for the, um, subcommittees. And so each of you sits on a subcommittee, so you've been actually active with us and doing part of the work. But these, all these pieces come together as one. We just had to start somewhere and so really identifying things is where we are. Maria keeps saying the different phases. And so, you know, the phase one was to really start the work as Maria was saying and to look at the, at the data. Two was to really get voice and three now is where we are, is like, what's next? So what is missing? We, we talked about demographics already, but then what else is missing to your point, Latonia? So I hope, you know, if there are any questions, but that's kinda the overarching as to where we are with the DIR. And what's important with the DIR that it's not just internal Springfield Public Schools. We do have, um, outside people working with us also. We have the union working with us, we have school committee working with us, we have us working with us. Um, and so really trying to make sure that we have the voices. We're also talking about, and there's a lot of teachers that sit on the committee. And so we're also thinking about how do we bring others, educators, and then the student voice, right? When, at what point does the student voice come in? And we start kinda looking at it through the lens of the students and the teaching and learning.
Um, thank you, Lydia, thank you. Any other questions to Lydia by the subcommittee members?
I do have a question, um, maybe a comment. So can we revisit on what our, our actual role is in the DIR committee? Because I find like, when I'm in the meetings, I'm a bystander. I feel like every now and again, they might ask me something or they might want input, but I almost feel like I'm there to observe, not to participate. And I don't know if that's the case or not, because I wasn't really told what my role was before I went in or, and I don't know if they know what my role is supposed to be. Um, and I also feel like in some ways, because I'm a school committee member, that maybe some of them aren't as transparent as they might wanna be. Because they may or may not feel that it's appropriate to say certain things in front of me. And, uh, are you experiencing it, Denise?
S- so no, I actually have experienced the complete opposite. I feel very much engaged. Um, I feel like the conversations have been very candid. I wasn't able to make the last one, but the, all of the others that I attended, I didn't. I do have to say that the very first one, I was mindful because I wasn't a hundred percent sure of what my role was and I didn't wanna overstep. But by the second time, I think it was that we met, it didn't feel like that at, at all.
So, so I don't know if it's the facilitator of, of my particular subcommittee. And not saying that they exclude me, because I don't feel like they're trying to exclude me in any way, but I just feel that, um, I don't know if they know what my role is supposed to be. And I'm not a hundred percent of what my role is supposed to be. So that would be helpful for me to have a better understanding of that aspect of it.
Agreed, because I think that to the same point, you know, am I, am I too engaged, right? Like it's the conver- you know, is that not what the conversations should be? I mean, it feels fruitful, um, it feels like there is real conversation happening about policy. Um, and how to address it. So, yeah, I think it would be helpful, Lydia, to, to know what our role is there.
Could, could I entertain because of time? And I know some members of this committee are in the five-thirty meeting committee. Could we reschedule another meeting? And I think this is very important, because now looking at the DIR committee, I think that looking at what was presented today and putting it in our, on our content, uh, we could be able to do like a checklist, um, because, not to duplicate, you know what I'm, I'm trying to say, not to duplicate what already has started. But the gaps that Ms. Naylor had presented, of those gaps are being acknowledged. And if not, us as a subcommittee have more for conversation at the next meeting and then charge the DIR committee, like Lydia says, making a presentation. Uh, where are we with the DIR committee? And what are the gaps that we intend to find on a subcommittee? I don't know what the members think about that.
I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just wanna add one more thing. Um, two things. One is, I want us to be able to look at, how do we come up with as a district an equity plan? Because I think it's very important that we come up with an equity plan, um, which would be inclusive of all these things that we've been talking about, Ms. Perez. And then also, should we change the name of this special committee from demographics to diversity or something else? Because I'll be honest, the reason why I was fighting for equity committee is because I was under the impression that the purpose of staff demographics was solely to focus on recruitment and hiring of diverse staff. So that name for our subcommittee is misleading. And if people look at it, they're gonna assume probably what I assumed, even though I was in it.
I know, I understand.
So are we saying that that is no longer the charge? Or that's not the sole charge of this committee, that it's broader than that?
Yes, at the beginning, we did say that. That's why the DIR committee was, um, created. Because it's broader than this. It was not only looking at the staff, uh, data only. That was phase one, and then we created those phase three, three. And that's how the DIR committee came into place through our committee.
So the DIR committee, it was a spinoff out of this committee?
Mm-hmm.
A combination of, of, um, of, um, all, everything that just needed to happen in, um, the district. And, and I just wanna acknowledge, Latonia, what you said. Um, because that's really good feedback for the chair of that subcommittee, right? Um, and so to make sure to the point, um, that we're all trained appropriately to be able to run these things, I think, you know, we just kinda got started because it, it just, we needed to start somewhere with everything happening around us. Um, and when the subcommittee signed the Black Lives Matter, if you re- recall. Um, so when that all happened, we just wanted to make sure that the momentum kept going. And so we wanted to kinda, um, be true to, you know, um, your subcommittee here and also to what you guys were saying as a school committee when you signed off on, on doing that work. And so we have been looking at partners to kinda come in and help us lift the work. Um, in, you know, and to make sure that we're going in the right direction. Um, so that is part of what the policies and procedures, Denise, that's basically what you missed. Um, at the last one, we were actually talking about bringing in somebody, um, an outside, um, person that knows what they're doing to help us lift the work, right? To make sure that we're all on the right page, that we're going in the right direction, um, that we don't get veered off track of what we're actually supposed to do. And then from Maria's point, um, from this subcommittee, and then from everything else happening, the charge was if we could put together a diversity, a DIR committee, um, across the city. So, you know, um, the SEA was, was also part of that and really wanted to be part of the work. And so that's how the SEA came to be and bringing in, um, teachers. And then, you know, the Pioneer Valley Project has always been a partner of ours trying to lift equity work. And so they became the outside agency to kinda just help us. But we really are just in the beginning stages of trying to figure, really figure it out. Um, and so we're looking for a partner. We've, we've found a couple um, that have been recommended to us. We're meeting with them, Denise, through our subcommittee to have conversations with them, let them know where we are and actually tell them where the, you know, we wanna go as a city and as a district, um, to help us kinda get there. So we are in the beginning stages. Um, to help us kind of get there. So we are in the beginning stages. Um, so this was a really important meeting to have, so that, um, you as our governing body. And, and you as the lead on the work through the school committee, we were all on the same page and doing the charge that you're asking us to do.
And, and, and Ms. Martinez, um, Christina, who's involved in point, the, the thing. Portrait of a Graduate, as I was gonna say, P O G. She's very involved in this equity work and anti-racism work. I don't know if she, she does it separate as a consulting, but her and her kids do this. Her children are teenagers, and they are very involved from the student perspective. And then she's very involved from an educator perspective on this equity, anti-racism work and stuff like that. So I would dare say to, to talk to her to see if maybe she can, can help in some way. She's done a phenomenal job with the, with the Portrait of a Graduate, and, and I think they've been a very strong partner. From my perspective, at least, what I've seen.
So could I just also really add really quickly? Uh, so this is, uh, actually very helpful and definitely informative. I, I agree with Ms. Nailor's, um, recommendation that we have an equity plan. I also, especially when I hear you, Ms. Martinez, talk about the holistic or the macro approach. In involving not just the district, but it being like citywide, where do we want our city to go? You know, I think that this work is so important and critical. That, yes, of course, we should have this subcommittee. But I also think that it should be, there should be an invite extended to all of the school committee members, right? And that that one, you know, training or orientation or P D that the superintendent is reportedly looking into. You know, doesn't suffice, like, if one training, one professional development as, as school committee members, doesn't suffice. I feel like these conversations are difficult, as we have seen them play out with, like, the mascot in hiring. And Juneteenth, and school to prison pipeline, and all of the other things that have all of those factors associated to them. Those are really difficult conversations. And when they get brought forward to the full committee. It's like people are blindsided by them, right? Or they don't fully understand them. And I think that it's important that those conversations, that they at least be invited. To be a part of those conversations at this particular level. Otherwise, the burden falls on us, as on Ms. Perez, yourself, who did an inordinate amount of work on the mascot. Situation to then be brought back to the full committee and then it not go anywhere. And the DIRE committee, the representation, I think, and I know that you can't add all of us, is really important. And I think that when we're talking or looking at things from an equity lens, you have all the women of color sitting on the DIRE committee. Now, don't get me wrong, I want to be on it, because I've learned a lot from it. But I think that representation matters, right? And it matters in its reverse form. Of who is sitting at those tables and who is pushing this agenda along.
So I think for the factor of time, um, I'm gonna recommend, and you give me feedback then. At the next meeting that we have, we understand the four faces that Lydia, uh, presented when it comes to the DIRE committee. So the gaps that Ms. Nayler has identified by having the presentation of where we are. Because we might, you, we might sit on the committee, but we, we don't have the other information of what the other committees through the DIRE committee is doing. So I think it's very crucial, uh, presentation. And that way, we could see all these gaps that were presented here, um, um, tonight. See where is it in, um, in the four, uh, face, uh, aspects that Ms. Martinez had presented. That will be my recommendation for the next, um, following meeting. So from there, we could figure out, oh, oh, still, I want those recommendations by Ms. Nayler. And by you, Ms. Hurst. Um, but we need to look at the DIRE committee, um, and look. What are the committees that we inform are doing and how could we implement the gaps that has been, uh, presented here? And I think that conversation is very interesting about having, um. Only the ba- black population sitting at that committee, I will emphasize to be discussed on, on the next meeting. And I think that's, that's the presentation for tonight. And I know there's other members that go into another committee. But I really, I think that we need to do the understanding, where are we with the DIRE committee? What are the gaps? And what are the, uh, what is the priority that we, us as a committee would like to see? And know some of the factors that were presented, what is the role, uh, Mr. Miles, was he was hired? And do we need some other person, like Ms. Nayler said? So I think at this point, the next meeting should be the presentation of the DIRE committee, and then come back as the committee. And with the recommendations of the gaps that were being presented, us discuss as a subcommittee, where are we going next? I think, um, for a point of feedback, I, I just want to hear and see if that will be our next step at the next meeting. I think we're, we're in the right direction, you know, and we are in the right directions right now. Um, so let's look at what we have as a research and what is the gaps that. Um, there, and then to find gaps. Um, and see through the DIRE committee how we go implement them.
Sounds good.
So I think this is the end of the meeting. I will follow with sending some dates for us to meet again. Um, and, and, and then, Ms. Nayler, I will look forward for your, uh, gaps that you have presented here tonight. Okay?
Sounds good. I'll send that over by the end of the week.
I just need a roll call, I mean, a adjourn motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, uh, Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Nayler?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. That was great.